Hello, everybody. Thank you for watching Cleveland Collective. I'm your host Amber Phillips and joining me is Danielle Downs. She's running for Kiowa County Council and she was previous Parma Republican Club President. And also with us is her daughter Alyssa. So we're gonna get started talking to Danielle, kind of about who she is as a person, and then we're gonna get into more how she followed or got into the political world. So Danielle, tell me about yourself. Who are you?
A proud mom of three. My daughter nineteen, Madeline is ten, and Tommy is eight. I'm an Air Force veteran, another proud, proud thing I am. HR, I've been in HR for almost twenty years, not to date myself, but that's okay. I'm forty, that is, that is what it is.
Experienced.
Yes, I'm experienced, so you'll say that. I'm also absolutely in love with what I do for a living. Honored to say that it never feels like I work a day in my life. I wish everybody felt the way I do about that, but I have a passion for people, so it's that drive that gets me to hopefully be the one that changes the course of their day or their life or what have you. I'm a DIYer. There's nothing I won't try to do around the house. I'm sure my daughter can attest to that. Just love to enjoy life. I'm blessed with wonderful family and friends. I mean, I'm here sitting with you, one of my best friends. And one of the beautiful things about politics is I met you in that arena, and here we are today. There's so many people that I've met that are just beautiful human beings. And, you know, I may have lost my first election, but I won forever friendship, so I feel like a winner already, so.
You're gonna make me cry.
Well, it's true, it's true.
So when I met you, you were the president of the Parma Republicans, and I was amazed at how you were able to get so many different candidates to come in, speak, say their piece, all the different fundraisers you did, and something that was memorable for me. Towards the end of everybody's campaign in two thousand and twenty-two, you had J.D. Vance on one day have an event. I believe Mike Gibbons was also there for that, and it was a completely packed house. It was incredible. Whether you liked, you leaned one way or another, that was a successful event. And then the following day, you went to back the Blue Rally, and Davios was a speaker there, as well as some of the local candidates.
Absolutely.
So how did, how did you make all that possible?
I'm not gonna take all the credit for that. That was a lot of help from the Kiowa County Republican Party. They had sent out postcards, about ten thousand of them, across the city. And it's just calling, cold calling, you know. And also, the relations, the relationships that I've formed, just talking to people and embracing them, what are they looking for? You know, like, hey, let's go, let's go have a conversation, let's back our local law enforcement, which is something that should be happening all the time, not just now. But it's just, you know, I'm always trying to get the community involved, everything I can do. Get the, get the candidates out in front of people is the most important thing, so I just kept trying to push that. Endorsements are great, and I have a couple already under my belt for this upcoming election, but we can't rely on endorsements. Unfortunately, there are people that do, but we gotta get out there. We gotta get out in front of the people, and it was absolutely beautiful how many people showed up. I mean, standing room only, that should be how it is all the time, you know. So I, no, I can't take all the credit for it. Lisa Stickin is an amazing human being, and I'm so grateful to call her a friend as well. She does a lot of work for the county party, absolutely. So hats off to her for, for those two events, back-to-back. She did a lot of work to, to do that, so put my name on the postcard, so yeah. Don't wanna take all the credit.
Absolutely. So with politics, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stress, there's a lot of pressure, there's a lot of eyes looking at you, and it could be probably overwhelming sometimes. How do you keep going and why do you wanna stay in it when those things just keep building up? Like, what keeps you going when you're kind of at your wit's end with some of the things?
Number one, I'm in competition with myself all the time. Regardless of politics, like professionally, personally, I'm always competing with myself, number one. Yes, there are moments where you start worrying about the candidate and what they're doing, your opposition, but most of the time it's, I have goals. I have to touch these people three times, seven times. I know where I'm at. I do my spreadsheets, it's very analytical, but it's more so just focusing on, why am I here? I'm not, I don't wanna worry about why they're here, you know. I wanna focus on me. I wanna put the positive energy into my election, not negative energy into their election, so that's what keeps me going. My three kids keep me going. They're the reason that I do these things. Your son is the reason I do these things. I mean, Kobe, Kobe for three, like, I, I love that little dude. Our future, children, I mean, our children are our future, and I wanna make sure that we set a proper path for them, and a, and a good one, that they can, you know, have the freedoms to do what we're able to do right now and sit here together, so. Yes, but I'm always in competition with myself. I think that's the, maybe the secret ingredient to a lot of my successes is just constantly pushing myself to just do better and settle for more.
I think you're amazing.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
So as county council, you're running for Kiowa County Council, what, what would be some of the things that you wanna focus on the most? So what's important to you within that arena? Like, what, within, you know, your first ninety days, what would be some of the things that you would wanna accomplish?
Um, I wanna, I wanna understand their budget. We have the highest taxes in the entire state. Eight percent is not okay. So I wanna focus on a budget. I wanna see that. I want, you know, as a taxpayer right now, I haven't seen it. You know, I don't know where are these funds actually going. I wanna properly allocate things. I was a business owner at one time. I can manage funds, no problem. So I wanna see where are they being allocated to. I'm certain that they're probably going to great things already, but I would like to see that firsthand and get my hands in it and get, you know, jump headfirst right into it. My son said to me a couple weeks back, which I think this is like super funny and super amazing for an eight-year-old to point out, but he said, "Mom, when you're done running for the little things, can you run for a president? Because I would like you to get rid of schoolwork and taxes." I told him, "I can't get rid of school because that keeps you smart. I can't get rid of work because it keeps us smart." But taxes, I'm definitely gonna have that at the forefront. I mean, I can't get rid of them, but voters need to understand why. Why are we at eight percent, you know, when we didn't have an opportunity to vote on, on that, you know? So people, the voters matter, so they need to know that. So that'll also be the number one thing. Voters need to know that they matter all the time, so that's where I'm at.
Okay. All right, so I, you wanna know where the taxes are going to? Where would you like them to go? So we're at eight percent. We wanna lower that. Obviously, we're gonna have taxes to some degree, but where do you think that those resources should be allocated to? Because right now, there are a lot of things that need work and they're not being worked on.
Right.
So what, where could that go instead?
Our foster care system, I think, is sad. I think we can always do better with that. I think that our infrastructure can always improve. I have to reroute my normal day because I literally don't want my car to fall in the biggest pothole I've ever seen in the universe. I, you know, potholes, I know it sounds silly, but they cause severe accidents. And, you know, I wanna make sure that my nineteen-year-old is out there safe, as well as your children and, and all my friends and, you know. But yeah, our, I looked a lot into the foster system, and I think that's something that definitely can be worked on and improved across the country, to be honest, but I'll cross that bridge when I get to it. But county level, you know, county roads, like I said, our children in the county, all of the things. I mean, it's gonna be overwhelming, it already is, but I like a challenge. I absolutely love a challenge. I love challenging myself too. So I hope the voters, when I do win, I hope they challenge me. I'm looking forward to it.
I know that about you, and I'm looking forward to it as well, because every time that this woman gets angry or motivated, the things that happen afterwards are incredible. So I remember a time not too long ago where she was upset and she wanted to get some stuff done, and people were telling her it couldn't happen. And it happened to be about her kitchen, and then all of a sudden she was knocking out the walls in her, in her kitchen and built a brand-new one by herself. In like, like a month.
Yeah, well, it's, there's, you know, still the odds and ends that drive me crazy, that are lingering. But yeah, I, I came home on a Friday, and actually, you called me, I think, three times in that two hours, and, and I finally said, "Amber, can I call you back? I'm knocking out a wall." "Oh, you're actually knocking down a wall?" And I'm like, "Yeah, it's, it's almost done." So in two hours, the, the wall was, was down and cleaned up, and took three breaks to, to talk to you and chat. But yeah, I just decided one day, I just don't like this wall anymore. So, no, it wasn't load-bearing. I do know how to check that, so I was solid, a couple people.
I don't know what that means.
I was, infrastructure, all about infrastructure. But yeah, so my daughter, she actually, she helped me. So it's a great therapeutic moment to throw a hammer through a wall, so I'm all about it, for sure.
I just think it shows that you're able to get things done with or without help, and even when there is things that are standing in your way, instead of like, "Oh, okay, I gotta stop now," you're like, "All right, watch this."
Right, yeah, yeah. You know, one of my favorite things is when people tell me, "You can't do that." My favorite thing in the world, outside of my children, is prove them wrong. So I will always, I will always prove you wrong. So I appreciate when people say, "You can't do that," or "She's not capable," or "There's no way that that, you know, can get done." Okay, well, we're gonna do it. Hence, I mean, I went in the military. So many people, it's not why I went. I went because I absolutely love this country, without a doubt. But I started talking to my recruiter when I was about fifteen years old, on my eighteenth birthday, raised my right hand, and that was, that was the goal. I was gonna turn eighteen, sign up for the military, and get a job at Express. I did both of those things that day. That was one of my greatest accomplishments, of serving my country. I mean, it's just, why not, you know? But people said, "There's no way that this little petite thing, that's such a girly girl, is gonna do this." So I did, with all the pride in the world, I did it. And I, I decided I was gonna load bombs in the military because you can't do that in your normal everyday life, right? So, I mean, I sit at a desk the rest of my life. I might as well load some missiles and call it a day on my favorite aircraft, so that's what I did. So, best thing, ever.
He's so cute. So while you're talking about the military, what do you have to say when people, it's not really, it turned into a political thing, but it's not. I mean, it applies for everybody, but the negativity that comes around right now regarding veterans and police. So when I was growing up, there was great respect for cops, military. A lot of my family did both. And now, all of a sudden, I mean, after the last couple of years, because of a few bad apples, you know, there were things that happened, now that respect is diminishing, and then actually, they were trying to defund the police as well.
Right.
So how do we keep the respect for both of those organizations while also dealing with the issues that did happen for the people that made, with some of the negativity that's happened?
Number one, I think everything starts and ends at home. I'm trying to change the course of that by teaching my kids, my eight, my ten, and my nineteen-year-old, that yes, there are bad apples in every, in everything, in every, every career, you know, whatever. But you have to teach your kids respect, and that goes such a long way. My kids know the importance of the nine eleven memorial. A lot of people that know me know the nine eleven memorial, the shops at Parma Town. That is so close to my heart. I come from a military background. Both my grandfathers were Marines in Viet, in Korean War, excuse me. Skip the generation, I decided I was gonna go. We don't have the freedoms that we have without the veterans. I don't, I don't like to include myself in a veteran category because I didn't, I didn't unfortunately have the opportunity to be deployed. I was pregnant with this one when I missed out on about thirteen deployments in that nine months of pregnancy, which was crazy. September eleventh happened shortly after I signed up. The course of this country changed so dramatically, and yes, the disrespect just, just became so prevalent, especially in the last couple of years. I mean, I wish people treated everybody with grace and kindness. I tell my kids every, every single day, "Choose kindness." That goes so far, and it, and it takes such minimal energy to just be kind. When nine eleven happened, I remember how wonderful people were to one another. We let people cut in front of us in, you know, on the street when we were driving. We let people, you know, we held the door for countless people, you know? We let people cut in line if they had a couple items, you know, at the grocery store, and we had a whole cart, you know. Somewhere along the way, we lost that. And again, I think, I always say with everything, it all starts and ends at home. So I, I try to instill that in my children, that yes, there are bad people out there, but good must always prevail, you know? I, I feel like I'm very tight with God. We talk every night. I, I feel like it's like such a great night when I fall asleep talking to God, and I, like, "Sorry, sorry, I forgot where we left off," you know, the next day. Everybody goes in my prayers. I try to take the negativity out of politics. There is a lot. This is probably our toughest and most important election that we're gonna have. I feel like we start, we're starting to say that every election now.
Yeah.
I feel like, yeah, I also feel like there's no such thing as campaign season any longer. I did not think that I would be in this situation where I'd be running again. I bowed out gracefully after I lost my first election. I lost by two hundred votes, I will point that out, so I think I did pretty good. I also feel like my community actually won, regardless of the actual outcome and who took the seat. Change did happen. Change across my city happened. So I do feel like I ran on, on downs for change, and we accomplished that. Some of the things that I set out to do did happen, so I take that as a win for the community. I didn't do anything from that point to this point with a hidden agenda, thinking one day I will run again for something. I don't think people should have hidden agendas. I'm very transparent. I try to be all the time. Even if you don't like what I'm gonna say, I'm gonna do it in the most poignant way. I never wanna hurt anybody's feelings, but I always wanna be truthful, you know? I think truth goes a very long way. In the military, it was integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all you do. And those three core values have stayed with me since I was eighteen and will forever stay with me. And I try to instill that into my children. And I will say, not to be biased because they're my kids, but they're the best three humans I've ever met in my entire life, so I'm absolutely honored to be their mom. Probably talking too much, but when it comes to my kids, you know, and my passion for this country, you know, every single time I see a veteran, you know, these, these, I go to the VA for my healthcare, and I see these, you know, I'm, I'm probably the youngest one in the building, which makes me feel kinda good, but, you know, they have their Korean War hats on or their Vietnam, you know, hats on, and cheers to them, because I don't know what they went through. I can only imagine. The PTSD, the mental health situations that we have in this country, the fact that our veterans, there's a lot that are homeless. We, I don't know how that's a thing. I, I really don't, and it breaks my heart. And that would be another focus, that I will somehow weasel my way in through the county council once I win, and make that a number-one priority as well, in line with our children and the foster system, because veterans should not be homeless, nobody should be homeless as far as I'm concerned. But if I could change that for every single person, I absolutely would. It's a tall order, but.
I think that it's interesting that we're able to do that for people that come into the country illegally, but we can't do it for the people that fought for our country. And that is nothing against immigration, because our country is built on immigrants.
Absolutely.
It's not a comment like, "Oh, you stay over there." No, you come over here the right way, and we need to focus these resources on the people that actually did something for us. Because regardless of how you feel about it, you could say whatever you want. A lot of people talk, go, go over there, go to boot camp, go to war, and see how you handle it. See if you're able to do exactly what they did. And on the opposite end with cops, I, what was it, Joshua McTarian in Twinsburg? He, there's a road for him now, but he was doing a traffic stop in Twinsburg, and somebody shot him. So we hear the stories of bad cops, but we don't hear what happens to cops or that they have families and maybe they're, what are they thinking? Wondering if their person is gonna come home.
Right.
So I don't wanna get pulled over. I don't want a speeding ticket. I don't wanna get arrested. So yeah, I could see that point of police like, "Eh." But when something bad happens to you, who are you gonna be calling?
Right, absolutely, absolutely. It breaks my heart. I mean, I, I think about Josh, and I think about, you know, I, I met an individual the other night, and he was talking about how he lost his son in the line of duty. And, you know, unfortunately, it does happen. Unfortunately, we sign up for our country, whether it be civil service or to serve in our armed forces, knowing that we might not come home. So many people raise their right hand to vow that they are going to honor and serve their country, whatever means necessary, and they might not come home. And yes, the families are heavily involved in that. They're also signing up, in a sense, because they're, they have to understand that we might not, you know. I, I think God certainly did not want me to be deployed because I missed out on way too many deployments.
And you got three beautiful babies.
I got three beautiful babies out of it, so I will take that as a win, you know. And I told the commander, when I decided to get out, that my purpose in life had changed. It was no longer to serve my country, but it was to serve my child, right here. So sometimes she does apologize, you know, she feels bad. And I, every single time, I told that commander, "I will serve my country at another time, but right now, I will serve my child." So I'm back again, serving my children and my country at the same time. But it does, it breaks my heart, the disrespect that people have for police officers, because, you know, I have unfortunately had experiences that did not go well. Some people do know, but I was attacked in my home. I was three years this week. It didn't end well with regards to how I felt about how the local police helped me, because I felt completely helpless. I felt completely alone on this ledge of, where do I go from here? You know, I don't. I don't go anywhere. I was strangled and suffocated, and nothing came of it. Strangulation at the time was not a felony in Ohio. But by the grace of God, I met a wonderful woman, who I will, I will not say her name, but the following May, after I met her, all of a sudden strangulation was a felony in Ohio, as it should have been.
It's alarming that it wasn't.
Yes, it was alarming to find out it wasn't when I was going through this. But my kids, I owe my life to. They saved my life that night. My son should never have seen what he saw. No child should ever see any of that, ever. That is not okay. But I couldn't help myself, and that's okay. I got out of my own way. That was the best thing that, you know, I kinda, I gave it to God, honestly. So I don't sit in it anymore. I'm an advocate for, for those that think that they're alone in their thoughts. They're not. I'm, I am a survivor. I'm no longer a victim, that's for sure. I can't. Funny, yes, absolutely. Funny part of that, I cannot grow an eyebrow at all. I, I won't pencil them in, because I just think that's, you know, it's just not me. I'm too old for that. But I'm an advocate. I, I want to, I don't want a woman thinking that this doesn't happen to people like myself. I'm a nobody. I really am. I'm a nobody. But I'm somebody in the eyes of my children, and God's not ready for me yet, so I'm gonna keep on pushing and keep helping whoever I can, wherever I can. I did find out that we do not have a domestic violence support group in the county at all since COVID. That is also not okay.
That's terrifying.
It is.
And would that be something that you would wanna work on when you get elected for council?
A million percent, absolutely. I wanna, one of the things I wanna do, which is probably a tall order, one of the goals in my life that would have really nothing to do with council, but it would absolutely help, is make a center one day, make a nonprofit. And if somebody wants to steal my idea, by all means, I will help you. I will advocate for you. Go ahead, steal it. I challenge you to that. But a whole center where I can put my HR talents to use and help them get reestablished, build a resume, dress for success type of situation that was in Cleveland for, I don't even know how long, you know? Build a center for, you know, defense, you know, self-defense classes. All the things encompassing in a building, I think would be absolutely wonderful, something we don't have. So I challenge whoever's watching to do that before I do it, and I, and look me up, and I will help you. But yes, it will absolutely be one of my, one of my things, because we need to have support. Strength in numbers, always. Children that witness it need to have support. Because, you know, mental health, there is no shame in my mental health game, as I tell people. Mental health is so crucial. We have to be able to get out of our own way. So when you focus on yourself and your mental health, put that first in the forefront, everything is smooth sailing after that, I truly believe. So I'm, I'm here to help whoever can't get out of their own way right now. And always, whether I win or lose, look me up, I will help you. I will help you get out of your own way, especially when it comes to domestic violence.
And that's special too, because there's a lot of stigma involved in all of that. People feel embarrassed, or like they did something to cause it, or things will get worse if they put a spotlight on it. And also, maybe you feel like you're alone, you know? So it's good for people to know that there's other people out there that are experiencing the same thing.
Yes.
Something similar to what we experience, and that there is help out there, and there is another side of things. But the lack of resources for domestic violence and the, kind of the setup for foster care for women and children right now, there's a lot of things that need to be worked on, and I don't know that that's really at the forefront currently for the people in office.
I don't know. I would hope, so I don't, I don't wanna assume. But, you know, as far as your statement of, you know, people don't wanna, they're afraid to put it on the spotlight. They're afraid to say their story. I'm not afraid to say my story. I'm not afraid to say it again right now. It's, I have anxiety. I have PTSD from it. I should have PTSD from serving my country. That would be more respectable. But at first, yes, I absolutely felt like, you know, what did I do in my past life to deserve this? You know, nobody deserves this. But, you know, when it happened, I was told, "Oh, Danielle, you can't run for city council now." For why? Why can't I? Watch me. Why? Because somebody suffocated and beat the side of my face in?
Yeah, I guess what you're saying kicking, that should be more reason about being resilient.
Yeah, exactly. So, and you know what? And, and again, if I, you know, I didn't win that election, God only knows, you know, he's the one that knows what's gonna happen in November for all of us. But I'm gonna keep pushing. I'm not gonna stop telling my story. I'm not gonna not run for office to possibly make change for the positive because of that situation. That doesn't define who I am. It just embraces all the greatness, and embraces the greatness that people might not feel within themselves because they're hearing firsthand that somebody in a little bit of a spotlight, like I am right now. I'm a normal person. It, it does happen. It's sad, because I live in probably the nicest development in Parma. It shouldn't happen anywhere, and it definitely, as I said, should not happen in front of children. But thankfully, you know, like I said, I owe my kids my life, without a doubt. If it didn't happen in front of my children, I don't know that I would be here today, so here we are.
Everything happens for a reason, and you said that brings out the greatness. That situation was terrible. I don't think that the people involved in that did anything to put you where you are now. You did that. The fact that you could deal with a situation that traumatic and come out of it, and it was pub, very public at one point, and now you're here.
Yeah.
And where are they?
Yeah, right, so.
So congratulations on that, regardless of anything else. I mean, that's a win.
Thank you, yeah. I think it's so important to find the silver lining in every single thing. I mean, it's just. I mean, it's just, that's like one of my, I have a lot of favorite things. I have a lot of favorite people. Another favorite thing is finding the silver lining. Um, I had a terrible two weeks. And this week was my greatest week after those two weeks. And of all weeks, to be the greatest week, it's the week of three years ago, you know, and uh, but you know, that was God's way of, you know, keeping me on my toes, making sure I was ready for all the great things, you know? So funny story, um, but I'm gonna do a little plug here for the gentleman that um, slammed in the back of my car the other night. So, you know, have the worst morning in the universe. That I think, you know, we have, we always focus on the negative, but then we never, you know, we forget about all the greatness and the, and the positive. So I received my endorsement later in that evening from the Cuyahoga County Republican Party. And then, yes, right? And then, um, so we're, we're, you know, heading out, we're gonna go celebrate at our local little dive bar and uh, stopped at the light, you know, minding my own business. Next thing you know, kid slams into the back of my car, you know, and I'm like, of all things, of all days, here we are, right?
You wanna say hi?
Yes, hi Trevor. Um, so after yelling at him, I'm pretty certain he was very scared of me in the moment. We hugged it out. Um, we became friends. He joined us for dinner, bought me my dinner. And it was his birthday, so um, police officer, Parma Police Officer, she gets there and uh, shout out to her, so uh, I won't, I'll protect her name, but uh, Marine, um, so absolutely, great veteran, uh, great human being. So we had a little side chatter and I said, I don't think you need to put any scare into him. I'm pretty sure I did enough of that, but um, we hugged it out. We're friends now. It's all good. He wants to drop lit for me. He wants to cold call, so you know, in the terrible, terrible day that I had, you know, unfortunately, the, I, I let the bad things overshadow the great things that day by receiving the endorsement. Again, endorsements are great, but they're not gonna make me lazy, that's for sure. But then there was.
The thing with endorsements and it is great to get support from your own people.
It is.
And it, it's awesome to, you know, you're going and giving each other compliments. I'm gonna pick this person, but the voters are the most important.
Yes, absolutely.
What's gonna make or break you and at the end of the day, that's who you're gonna be serving.
Absolutely.
And there's a lot of people that get endorsements and then they're done. They're like, oh, well, you know, Joe Schmo got me. I got twenty other over here, so yeah, I'm just chilling.
Yes.
I might go and see a voter. I don't know. I'll stand in front of an election site, but they're not actually with the people.
Right.
Like one thing, I'm, I mean, this was a competitor of mine when I was in politics and I was Matt Dolan. And he ended up surging, uh, he was in like fifth place or something. He was pretty low and he was, went door to door in Parma and Middleburg and a few other places and was introducing himself and he, he shot up because of that. And it's cuz the voters wanna see that you're a person. A lot of politicians, they put themselves on a pedestal and what are you gonna do for me? Are you really a person? Are you saying what your communication advisor told you to say? So it's refreshing to see somebody that is what they say they are and it's not who they paid somebody like a hundred thousand dollars to teach them how to be.
Right, yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm definitely known for my improv. I uh, I'm not a politician. I never wanna be a politician, that's for sure. There's a huge difference between politicians and public servants. So, you know, I might lose. I'm gonna focus on the positive that I'm probably gonna win, right? But I'm gonna continue to be a public servant in my community regardless of the outcome, you know, because that is super, super important. Endorsements, yes. I, I've had the privilege of uh, being a part of candidates that uh, well, I was endorsed by this person or I was endorsed by this. I'm good. No, you're not. Because yes, all endorsements are beautiful. Having the support of the, of the party is a wonderful thing. I'm honored because I, I did not receive an endorsement the first time I ran and that's okay. I, I told them, I said, I'm still gonna do this regardless of an endorsement. So I won my primary in a landslide, so I'll take that as a good, awesome win. I did that all on my own, so obviously with the help of friends because they definitely uh, they definitely, without my friends, I wouldn't even have been on a ballot. So shout out to every single eighty-six people that signed my first petition ever, which you're only allowed the max of seventy-five, so I did have to get rid of eleven people, but um, shout out to all of them. Shout out to the ninety-two people that got me on the ballot this time around, so I appreciate you, absolutely. But yes, voters matter. Absolutely. Like I, every election, your vote matters. Unfortunately, people feel that it doesn't and I understand why they feel that way. Um, I mean, case in point, our last uh, presidential election was a, was definitely a, a situation of that. Yeah, right, we're doing fantastic. But you know what? Silver lining in that, because here we go, silver lining. There's a lot of crazy things, a lot of topics we can discuss and we could be here for the next twenty-five hours talking about it. But look at all the people that are stepping up because they don't like the current situation. Whether it be critical race theory or SEL or, you know, just how they're treating our children or human trafficking or illegals or fentanyl. There is something on the dashboard of topics that resonates in a person. It could be just one thing, but it's pushing people. We have so many people now in this arena that we didn't have even when I ran the first time. So it's that silver lining that we can find, that we can all collectively say, there is something that we can all agree on that is not okay. And we need, you know, people are stepping up. Instead of just saying, I'm gonna sit back and just watch it or I don't care, I don't vote. I wanna change that conversation too. Another one of my favorite things, flipping an uncomfortable conversation. So I told you I have a lot of favorite things.
Yeah, and I mean, I've got some feedback with that, like there's a lot of different topics and people are gonna be on either side of the board with it, right? People feel very strongly pro or they feel very strongly con.
Yes.
And what I meant is being able to debate both of those. So I may not necessarily agree with, you know, you or somebody else's, you know, views of something, but I could respect you enough to listen to it and maybe we can come to a common ground. And what I think's missing, especially like in Congress, is there, it, it's become a reality TV show instead of people actually doing what they were voted in to do and work with the person across the aisle. Cuz you could, you could all be in your little group and silence each other and say, oh yeah, you're great. Oh yeah, your idea is great too. Well, that's because you're with a bunch of like-minded people that of course they're gonna say that because you're all gonna vote the same way. But in order for things to change, people need to stop being so defensive and so vile with each other. Like if you talk about it either way, like abortion, that is something that on either side, people could be very extreme about. And it's with Republicans, they didn't think it was gonna be a big issue in uh, twenty twenty-two. And it was a huge issue. Like when Rover's Wade got overturned, people started looking into things. They had rallies. They started voting more and that wasn't something that was anticipated. But people, like one side saying, oh, you need to abolish it. We know abortions. One side saying you could have an abortion up until the baby, maybe when the baby comes out, who knows? But to be able to find a middle ground and see, hey, you know, I don't like this, you don't like that. Maybe we can move the needle a little bit to come up with something, a compromise like in business, so we can move things forward. With children changing their genders, there's nothing wrong with liking somebody of the same sex. There's nothing wrong with becoming who you feel you want to be. There is something wrong with allowing a child to change their gender before their body and their hormones are fully developed. Cuz you do not know what that's gonna do to that person's health once they grow up. I mean, that's my personal view on it, but if you wanna do it after you're eighteen, go for it.
Right.
And I don't think people think in levels of gray, they think very black and white and, oh no, I hate that. Oh no, I love it. And we need to be able to discuss everybody's opinions in order to move the needle forward cuz right now all we're doing is having a reality TV show where everyone's bashing each other and all this crazy stuff happens. Like there should be basic things that everybody can agree on and because of egos, they don't discuss it.
I would absolutely agree with that.
And a plug for you, I mean, everybody can say that they're gonna do whatever, but I've seen you in action. I have seen the all the insanity you've had to deal with and the things that you've turned it into because of that. I mean, you are able to get people together. You go door to door and I, I, I wasn't even going door to door. I'm not knocking on this person's door and you're like, okay, I'll be back. I'm gonna go knock in the door and introduce myself and I'm like, okay, I'm gonna stay at your house. But you want to.
Yeah, right.
So I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of things that go into that and wanting to, the nine eleven memorial mentioned. You cleaned the memorial on Veterans Day. You actually went there and were cleaning up trash off the memorial and you weren't elected for anything. So to do that as a regular, I'm sorry for making you cry.
No, you're, I, that, that place holds a special, special place for sure.
To just be a citizen and your neighbors know you and they know that you do want, I mean, whether, you know, you can get enough votes to go one way or another with the things you wanna change. In your heart, you wanna do good things and I can't say that for a lot of politicians. So.
It's cuz I'm not one.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's a plug for you. I think that in whatever role you're in, you will make positive change happen and if someone tells you you can't, you're just gonna be better at it.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that plug.
Miss Alyssa, you've been sitting very patiently for like an hour.
Here comes the heat.
Oh boy.
So Alyssa is Danielle's daughter and she has been around, I mean, ever, ever since I met you. You have been, you've been with your mom. You've been going to the meetings. You help her um, with the door knocking or whatever she needs to do. You and your siblings are always in the picture. So what do you have to say about your mom running?
I think it's honestly really cool. I mean, I don't know, it's different because like a lot of my friends' parents, like they're not involved as much as she is. They, they don't really care necessarily. And um, a lot of my friends, they have an opinion, but it's, which is fine, but I don't know if it's, they have that opinion because of their parents, you know what I mean? I mean, she taught us like to have our own opinion and to say how we feel and all that stuff, but at the end of the day, I think it's awesome, like my mom's doing that, you know? I think I'm like, ah, none of my friends, you know, their parents aren't doing anything like this. Like they don't care that much. Yeah, basically. But yeah.
She does have great friends. I love them dearly.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but um, yeah, I don't know.
So who is she as a person? Like what is the day in the life of your mom?
Day in the life is.
All of that stuff out, just the person?
Day in the life of mom, let's see. I like this question. Um, she wakes up at four thirty for, I don't know why. So there's that.
Pay my phone calls at six?
Yeah, exactly. And she'll start cleaning around five thirty, six o'clock while she's probably on the phone with you. And then sometimes she feels the need to just, I don't know, knock down a wall at eight AM when Alyssa and Maddie and Tommy are still sleeping. But that's fine cuz she knows that there is an ordinance now where she can't, you know, knock walls down until like, what, was it ten?
I think you said eleven.
Eleven.
I think I pushed for ten.
No, eleven's a good, eleven's a good time, yeah.
It's a great alarm clock.
In her world, it would be like one, cuz she's nineteen.
Yeah.
And would prefer to sleep, but.
Um, and then it'll just be like random stuff. She puts a list out on the counter and I love these lists. I don't know why, I'm like. I have an obsession with looking at the list, like what is she about to tackle today? You know, like what, what is she about to do? Yeah, it's just always random, like trimming the bushes outside of the front yard or, you know, knock down a wall or paint, paint the doorway or, I don't know, something random all the time.
Trim work has been sitting on that list for quite some time.
Yeah.
Almost done.
Motion sensor lights, it's just random. Um, and then she'll, she'll be tired. She'll be like, you know, I wanna take a nap. Never takes a nap. Like that's not possible for her. Like that's just never a thing that will ever happen. If she ever is taking a nap, you know, she's like not feeling good or sick or whatever, you know? And then she'll get back up and just do it all over again, just clean and, you know.
I try to get everything done, but I don't have the little ones, you know, because then when I have all three, it's
It's a ruckus.
This has to be a focus, you know, like it can't be, I gotta get the laundry done. I gotta go grocery shopping. So like I'll order, you know, groceries at ten o'clock at night for a curbside pickup at seven AM the next morning. So it's just like, you know, time is money. So, you know, you gotta, I gotta prioritize so I can get all the things. We should talk about car picnics on another favorite.
I was just about to bring that up and the curbside pickup, I think that's like the only positive that came out of COVID.
Yes, I would agree. I would agree. Yeah, for a person with PTSD a little bit, um, I uh, I, you know, I love people, but um, something about.
The lights in the grocery stores, I don't know. I get panic attacks sometimes trying to find things and I get had.
I get like overwhelmed. There's just so many choices, like twenty-seven choices for paper towels, you know? That's why when I talk about politics, we should have more choices than this, just this is it, you know? You get twenty-seven different paper towels, but you know, so, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that could be a whole different conversation. It is strange out of all of the people in this country and all of the, I mean, there are so many talented, brilliant, successful people and then you see the ballot sometimes.
I will shout out to uh, Christie Banner, Christie Banner Bunny, AKA Bunny. Shout out to her, also one of my best friends. Her and I are on the ballot together, so what a beautiful thing right there, so. I'm taking my daughter's spotlight, by the way. Yeah, both for Christie Banner.
It's okay.
So now, since we interrupted Alyssa, Alyssa, can you please tell us something embarrassing about your mother?
She hates car washes. Like I don't understand why. Like she can load bombs in the military, but she cannot go through a car wash. Doesn't matter if she's in the car like driving or sitting in the passenger seat. She will not go through a car wash. Like she would get out of the car and walk around the entire building before she is actually in.
Please just take the wheel cuz I don't wanna be in there for any of it. I just think it's, I'm a Final Destination girl, grew up on those movies. So I just think like all the things, you know, like is there a body that's gonna fall out from above? Is the car in front of me gonna keep going or am I gonna slam into it and then get stuck? I'm pretty sure that happened to you.
It did happen to me.
And when you told me that, I'm like, oh my gosh, see? Case in point. I don't wanna put car washes out of business, but my goodness, something's not right about those things. It's just like pogo sticks, leprechauns and car washes. I just can't.
Oh, leprechauns. Like if you do the leprechaun.
Oh, yeah.
Like if you do the leprechaun voice, like she, it's.
Don't, don't you dare.
I can do it.
No, 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 no. Oh my goodness. But yeah, uh, so I have to take. St. Patrick's Day for that exact reason. Leprechauns freak me out for sure. I know they're not real. People tell me they're not real.
To be continued on that, we'll have an additional video with Danielle meeting a leprechaun.
Oh, boy.
Continue.
What else? Something embarrassing. Hold on. Oh, okay, this is a good one. Um, she has to hide Reese peanut butter cups. Hide it. Like she can't have, let anyone know that she's eating them. Like so she'll hide it in rent room, various locations in the house and, yeah.
In my closet.
Does not like to share those.
No.
But sometimes she will, like occasional, yesterday she gave me two, but that was, that was it.
I housed like probably twelve of them, but I, I did give her two. I did share.
She has this big box, bag of socks in her room, which blames all of us that none of them are matching, which is not entirely true.
This is why we're friends. I have a bag of socks too.
I feel like, that's like the worst part of adulting is trying to match the sock.
I don't know where the other sock goes.
Throw them all out and start over, but every week, here we are, I lay them all out.
But she wears my socks. She wears my socks.
I wear anybody's socks before I try to find a match. I just, I just think it's wrong on so many levels.
Yeah, no, I have mismatched socks and then she's like, um, Alyssa, why are there so many mismatched socks? Well, you're wearing them as well, so you are part of the mismatch. Yeah, there's at least a hundred some socks in there.
They encompass my whole entire queen size bed when I lay them all out. I've taken a picture before and I'm like, this is my life. This is what it's amounted to is seventy-seven socks that don't match. Like why, why do we continue to do this?
I don't know.
It's like the definition of insanity.
Yeah, it's a definition of adulthood though. Like you get that, you get a bunch of random bags. I have a lot of vinyl bags and grocery bags.
Well, now we have to go to places like, you know, I'm not gonna say cuz that would be mean. But we get all these things and we get up there and they're like, we have to buy bags. My son, eight years old, for why? Do you remember the bags we have at home? Why don't we need to buy one? We didn't have to buy one last week. Do you remember the bags we have at home? Why don't we need to buy one? We didn't have to buy one last week, we're just gonna carry it, you know? But yeah, we have bags, we have socks, we have Legos, we have, you know, I happen to step on all these things at four in the morning when I'm waking up, which, hence the motion sensors, so now I can see where I'm going.
And I'd say, one last embarrassing thing is you cannot talk, like, hypothetically, let's say, I just, I happen to be upstairs in her general area at four-thirty in the morning, as she's not even taking her first sip of coffee yet. Immediately yelling, I mean, what are you doing up here? Like, why are you, wha- what are you doing? I haven't even had coffee yet, like, this is ridiculous, like, I'm like, I literally just, you know, had to use the restroom, or whatever it was, and she's, I don't care, just go back to sleep, so.
I like my mom time, I think it's important, I love my children, I absolutely love my children, but they, they know now, they'll peek, you know, they're learning, they'll peek up, mom, how many, how many cups so far? This is my second, okay, good morning, you know, if it's still on my first, they just close the door and go, like, they just walk away, they won't, they won't even say anything. But I do love my children, I don't want you to think that.
Yeah, I can understand that, as a mom, I need like a pot of coffee before I could speak to anybody in the morning.
Right, not a morning person.
Even not as a mom, I just don't, I need coffee.
I don't even know if I'm, I, I can't say I'm not a morning person, because I love waking up, I just love like, okay, God has me up today.
I don't think she's a morning person.
Let me go have a coffee, I, I think I am.
That's why you're like in the morning, you'd be a perfect.
No, but then when she wakes me up, when she wakes me up, she's talking all fast, and I'm like, I can't even, I'm not even understanding what you're saying right now.
Yeah, I tend to forget.
Did you take out the garbage? No, I, you didn't even tell me, yes, I did, I told you when I woke you up this morning. I cannot comprehend anything the minute I wake up, like, nothing.
I do tend to forget, um, to all the people I've ever done this to, I tend to forget that, although I woke up at four, and it's now eight, you know, that not everybody else has already put in a four-hour day, so forgive me that I've text you or called you, like, why are you not up yet? You know, why, why are you, like, so I, I do tend to forget, I have to remind myself, so a lot of times I forget to respond to someone that texts me at eleven o'clock at night, knowing I'm already sleepy, because I go to bed at like eight-fifty-seven, you know? But, so, yeah, right, I am, I am a party animal, between my diamond art that I'm obsessed with, courtesy of my children, who now make fun of me, even though they're the ones that started it. Those are another thing that I have all around my house, is the little diamond art beads, they're just, it's just, it's obnoxious.
And then Theo eats them, and.
Theo's our dog.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, we do have a little dog, against everything.
She finally got a dog.
After literally my entire life.
She created a PowerPoint about how it was a good idea to get a dog, no different than her Christmas list is always a PowerPoint.
Absolutely.
So, here we are, yeah.
With the links, the price, and the size.
Yeah, yeah, so, we're very organized when it comes to Christmas lists and buying a dog and all the things.
And you taught her all this.
I did, I did.
But instead, I just came home with the dog, after she had specifically told me no.
Yes, the text message read.
She'll like it eventually.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, I do, I do, you know, he's lucky, he's cute, he's a little bougie thing, fit in my purse. But the text officially read, so I'm the one that made you a mom, your firstborn, you love me, this, this just happened, and then a picture of Theo in the mix, so. Yeah, I really couldn't say no at that point, but, um, he is a cutie pie, so.
So, we're gonna close things off, but I have one more question. So for any voter, or anyone looking at your mom right now, wondering why they should vote for her, what would you have to say to them?
I would say she's real, um, she means what she says, and if she's telling you she's gonna do something, she's definitely gonna do it. I mean, she's honest when it comes to a lot of things, and a lot of people aren't as honest when it comes to politics, but she is. She shows her, shows you guys her real self, she is involved, she cares about your opinion, whether it's the same as hers, or it's, you know, opposite. But I would say, yeah, she's just real and honest.
I would vouch for that.
You're welcome.
All right, well, I wanna thank Danielle Downs and Alyssa for joining me today. Danielle is running for Cuyahoga County Council, um.
District four.
District four, which would be Parma, Parma Heights, and Middleburg Heights.
That's right.
Okay, well, vote for Danielle Downs, I'm Amber Phillips, and this was Cleveland Collective.